Seeing at 6:01, I'd like to call the March 2nd, 2022, regular meeting of the Kansas City Council to order, and would ask if you're able to, to stand and join me in the Pudgeville Legions.
.......................................
Clerk, please call her all.
Councilmember Petty?
Here.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Here.
Councilmember Winger?
Present.
Councilmember Naxted?
Here.
Mayor Gabriel?
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denny?
Here.
Councilmember Beazid?
I'm here.
And Councilmember Sonart?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Ma'am Clerk. I will also note that we have our city manager online also as well. Welcome, everybody, this evening. Thank you for coming out. First order, next up, we have Agenda Approval. And before we do that, I'd like to call your attention to a laydown that you should have in front of you with requests and additions to the packet. Action Add to Item O, informational items, Kenai Senior Connections, 13th Annual March for Meals flyer, requested by Councilmember Winger. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval of the agenda with the added item O.
I'll second that.
Thank you. unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Councilwoman Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move for approval of the consent agenda and request unanimous consent.
Second. Is there anybody on the body that would like to amend the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, I'd like to ask the clerk to please read the consent agenda into the record.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of February 2nd, 2022, and approval of the regular meeting minutes from February 16th, 2020-22. But both of those brought to you by the city clerk. New business, action approval bills to be ratified, brought to you by the administration, and action approval purchase orders over 15,000 brought to you by the administration, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Ma'am Clerk. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to address anything that is on the consent agenda that was just read into the record? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Tonight, we have no scheduled public comment. Next up, we have unscheduled public comment. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Ms. Nelson?
Would you rather have me sit or stand? It doesn't make any difference. Marian Nelson, President of the Board of the Kenai Arts Center. The monthly show, his changing and the new show for this month will open, well, it's, it opened today, actually, in terms of public viewing, but the opening reception is tomorrow night, Thursday, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And kind of the usual show, the show opens, which is a photography show, and it's a very full show. There's lots of different photographs, and some of you might remember some years ago when Bill Heath, who's a very accomplished local photographer, had a small shots exhibit, which are definitely smaller pictures and a real variety. So we brought that back, and that is on one wall, is to the right, as you come in the front door. And there's everything from a Polaroid picture to a 10 by 10 or 10 by 12, then on to all the rest of the display in the room, which, of course, is, is very varied and from local and out-of-the-area photographers. It's a, it's a great show. It's a full show. It's one of those that will make almost everybody happy that walks through there because there'll be the kind of the usual pretty pictures that we all like to see. Even though we've seen them lots of times, there's also some unusual ones and more an artistic bent composition to subject matter. So tomorrow night, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., refreshments, music by Nelson Kemp, and a good time to be had by all and ask questions of any workshops that are coming up because you can certainly register, put your name online, on the line for, to be contacted for future workshops. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Nelson? Thank you, Marian. Will they be serving jail pale ale? That was a very good.
Damn, no, we won't. That was a one-time deal. Yes, we have this great arrangement with Kenai River Brewing that they did come up with this pale jail ale based on the jail that most of you are aware of that's in the back of the Arts Center, since it used to be the Police and Fire Department long ago, long, long ago. And certainly, people can walk back there and take a look at it, as well as the items that are for sale in the retail area. So that's the story for this month.
Very good. And for those of you that don't know, Nelson Kemp is a Marian son. He's well worth the effort to go over there just to listen to him play. He's very talented.
Yeah.
Thank you, Marian.
Sure.
Oh, sorry. Vice Mayor Glenn Denny?
Yeah, I'm interested in, you know, history of Kenai and a lot of the history is actually current events for me. I've been here 52 years, but is there a section of black and white photography, or is there something?
Oh, there's some black and white photography.
Anything, anything, anything to the old Kenai, or is it just mixed in at the pleasure of the artist?
That's a good question. I do not recall in any old Kenai shots in this show. We had a show, well, more than two years ago, since we were closed for a couple of years, but we had a historic buildings of Kenai show.
Yeah, okay.
Which was pretty popular. Didn't, it wasn't a big show, but was interesting, of course, like our old part of town and old buildings are in the area. I don't remember right this minute in the next 50-some pictures if there's a historic reference to any of the shots, but I bet you can come and find out.
I was going to say, you just have to show up to find out.
That's right. Good line, Jim.
Thank you, Marian. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to address the council at this time on any item that's not on the agenda or consent agenda? Ms. Ralston?
Hi, my name's Barbara Ralston, and I teach at Mountain View Elementary, and I just wanted to thank the people that were able to come to Love of Reading. It was wonderful. The kids loved it, and they were very excited. And Brian, thank you very much for coming, along with Tia, Tina, and Jeremy from the Fire Department. Our school board member from Kenai area came and read Morris, and then the Kenai Primary Children's Librarian, ACOX, came and read too. There were several other people, school board meetings, people from the district office and around the community and the borough. So I wanted to encourage you to come next year. It's really fun. We did change it, and we had two sections, and we're going to try to keep it that way again for next year. It spread out the people more, and they got to move around, and also what we found out, it was easier to work around special schedules and everything else to have more readers within the school. So I want to thank you on that. Also, I do want to encourage you that I am working with Officer Smith and Safety Brad from Safety Kids for the Bike Rodeo. As I mentioned last time, it's a very big passion to mine because I had a first grader when I was back at Sears, when Sears was still open, that was going after her, his brothers and sisters to try to keep up, and he came by Aliaska tires there, and he got hit by a car and he died, and he didn't have a helmet on. So it's really a passion of mine to give every child a helmet and work on that. So I just want to bring that up to them, and thank you. Do you have anything from me?
Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Ms. Ralston, I just want to say it was a pleasure to be part of that, and I just want to say thank you for asking all of us to come and be part of that event. I absolutely loved it. I did all day, so I look forward to next year, and I really, I'm looking forward to your Bike Rodeo event as well, and your first grade field trip. So I know you're a busy lady, and I just want to say thank you for all you did today for Dr. Seuss's birthday. I know you're probably exhausted from doing that big event, but I just want to say thank you, and I will see you in the morning.
All right, and thank you. Anything else?
Councilmember Petty?
Yes, I would like to say thank you for organizing and putting on that Love of Reading event. Some of us had prior engagements, but our support was there in, in heart. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, and the kids really enjoy it, and it's fun to have other people come in and read to them and tell them why it's important to get a good education and keep them in school.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denny?
Yeah, just a question. Do you have a rough timeline when the Bike Rodeo is? Is that usually in April?
Well, right now, we've, we're working around three dates, possibly the 29th, it's that last Friday in April, and then the first Friday in May, and then the second Friday in May is what we've kind of, hopefully we can work around there. We're working with those two, and then also Beaman's has volunteered every year to come over and do safety checks on the bikes. So they bring their tools, and they pump up the tires and adjust the height of the bikes and different things, and then parent volunteers write down the serial numbers and give them to the police. So if a bike is taken or stolen or misplaced or found, that they can get it back to the rightful owner.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Just one quick question. On the Bike Rodeo, I know we had donated funds last year for bike helmets. Are we still, are you still looking good in your fund or being able to purchase helmets this go-around?
We are always looking for that. We are also looking at doing a intermediate bike ride, whether we do it during the school day or do it as a family barbecue. I'm working with Mr. Kurtcher with that right now to get them involved too, because most of our kids that ride their bike are three, four, or five. The younger kids can't ride unless an adult or an older person is riding with them, and we're finding that the helmets that we purchased last year from some funds that were donated by the city council and other people that we gave them out to the kids because I won't let them leave unless they have a helmet on. And I do bus duty most of the time, and so I'll say, where's your helmet? Oh, I left it out. Come here. And so we use that, and if they bring it back, fine. If they don't, it's theirs to keep on that. So it's really important to give all those helmets to the kids, and us too.
Yep, and adults, yeah. And Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you. Ms. Ralston, thank you very much for, for the invitation to come speak, read books. I certainly wanted to do that. I've had fun doing that at your school and at Sears Elementary in years in the past, but unfortunately, I was out of town. But I was kind of hoping maybe you'd have another opportunity this year, but I'd be happy to do it next year. And, and also, thanks for, for everything you do with the Bike Rodeo. Like, probably when you started it, my girls were both at Sears Elementary at that time. Remember bringing the bicycles there and then, and over to Mountain View after that, and, and then the, the helmets became that, that, the big issue, of course, for that reason, and I do certainly remember, remember that. But anyway, thank you for all you do, and you've been, you've been doing it consistently for a very long time. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Ralston. I just wanted to, just, just chirp in here too, just say, I think this, this was like my third or fourth time doing the Love of Reading. There's been times I've been out of town when it, when it happened, but it was nice to get back to do it. I think last year was canceled because of COVID, and that was a bummer. So it was, it was really neat to get back in the classroom with the kiddos, and yeah, I really enjoyed that. And then, yeah, and all the work you do on the, with the, with the kids on the Bike Rodeo. If you would, once you dial in on a date, if you could just blast the council or send an email to the clerk and ask them to notify so all the council members know that when, the date and time, okay?
That'd be great. Yes, last year, I taught everything online from Kenai to some Saldana schools. I had K-12, and they even came. So it was really fun, and I thought, oh, I don't know if they'd come, but they did come, and they had a great time. So we got some Saldana kids that came over and joined us with that. It was great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Anybody online, Megan? No. Seeing none, we'll come to, back to council on public hearings to item D1, ordinance number 3273-2022, accepting and appropriating two grants from Derek Kaufman Fund through the Alaska Community Foundation, one donation from the Friends of the Kenai Community Library for the purchase of a bike repair station. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact ordinance 3273-2022.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number 3273-2022? No one online. Seeing no one else to testify, we'll bring it back to council. And Administration Paul, do you want to give an overview? I think I heard someone say, tell us more about it, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
So, as you can see here, we got two $1,000 grants from the Derek Kaufman Fund, which is actually a fund that was started by one Hillcorp employee, very generous employee, and then also Hillcorp itself. And the funds are managed by the Alaska Community Foundation, and basically, they're just looking to make impacts in the state of Alaska. So they provided two $1,000 grants, both were unsolicited to the library for just general support of the library. And then with the combination of that, those funds, with the $1,500 from the Friends of the Kenai, it enables us to install the bike repair station.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Any comments from council, deliberation? Vice Mayor Glenn Denny?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, I think this is a really neat idea. I think it was floated one time before, or maybe it is in existence, that the Parks and Rec was going to sponsor something like this at various locations through the community, but the, the library is a perfect place for this. It's centrally located, and, and librarians seem to be knowledgeable about all things, to include bike mechanics. The only question is, is maybe a, an August rain shed or something, a little, a little tent, so people could operate on their, on their implements, out of, out of a, out of a rain drop, droplet event, or, or is that something else that we can come up with money for? Or do you need it?
Ms. Ralston?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glenn Denny, I don't believe there's any sort of cover over this. That's not a part of, of the bike repair station. I do know that this is the third bike repair station in the city now, and the other two, I believe, were collaborative effort between the community group bikes and also Parks and Rec. So this will be the third one, but there, there is no cover.
Thank you.
Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. A question for city manager, Mr. Ralston. Where are those other two locations at? I recall them saying that one location was at Cunningham Park, but I cannot recall where the other location is.
Ms. Ralston?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Winger, you know, I don't know where they're at, but I can get that information for you.
I think one was at Beaver Creek Park, is on the, on the spur highway. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I do have one question, or maybe just how, how are we going to get the word out that there is a bike repair station? Will that be on the website of the, of the, maybe some signage? Ms. Wolf?
I can answer that.
Yeah, through, through the city manager.
Yes, so we'll be using our Facebook account as well as the website, and we'll hopefully also get it out to the media, just to make sure that everybody knows it's there.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, deliberation? Seeing none, clerk, please call her all.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denny?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilmember Beazid?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonart?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance 3273-2022 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we have item D2, Resolution Number 2022-10, approving the execution of a lease of airport reserve lands using the standard lease form between the City of Kenai and State of Alaska, Division of Forestry, on Lot 4A, FBO subdivision number 11. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-10, requesting unanimous consent.
Second.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2022-10? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Councilmember Naxted?
Yeah, I'd just like to say this, this is something that comes up, I think, every year. It's an annual thing, so it's, it's pretty routine, but it looks like with some improvements, they're going to get a five-year lease. So it will be five years before we hear from it again.
Councilmember Sonart?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Just a question. On the improvements, is it the lessor or the lesssee that's responsible for the financial payment of those improvements?
Ms. Ralston?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Sonart. So the lesssee is committing to build improvements at a minimum of $10,000. So they're the ones that are responsible for, for constructing the improvements.
Any further discussion, questions, comments, deliberation? Seeing none, unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2022-10 is adopted. Next up, we have item D3, Resolution Number 2022-11, authorizing a budget transfer within the Kenai Municipal Airport Snow Removal Equipment Capital Project Fund. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-11.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2022-11? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council.
Requesting unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2022-11 is adopted. Next up, we have item D4, Resolution Number 2022-12, authorizing a budget transfer within the Kenai Municipal Water and Sewer Capital Project Fund. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-12, requesting unanimous consent.
I'll second that.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2022-12? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation? Vice Mayor Glenn Denny?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I just would ask a, maybe a 30,000-foot view of, of this project, and, and maybe for those who are in radio land, a illustration of where this is located and, and why it's necessary. Thank you.
Ms. Ralston?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glenn Denny. So this project is on Mission Avenue, directly adjacent to the block, because of the continuing erosion along the block.
Because of the continuing erosion along the bluff, it was necessary to vacate a portion of the utilities that were in danger of going over the bluff. When we originally put this project together, we put together an estimate of what we thought design and construction would cost. However, as we worked through design, the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation asked for some additional requirements for the project, including some carrier piping to provide safe separation between water and sewer mains, as well as the installation of fire hydrants. These additions did increase the estimated cost. So even though we are 100% designed, we wanted to come back to council and get the necessary money appropriated before going out to bid for the project. So assuming the resolution passes and we get the $40,000 transfer from the manhole restoration project, we will immediately go out to bid to get the project constructed this summer.
Thank you.
Further discussion, questions? Seeing none, clerk, or, I'm sorry, yes, unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, resolution number 2022-12 is adopted. Next up, we have resolution number 2022-13, expressing intent to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. Pleasure, council. Councilmember next then.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution 2022-13.
I'll second that.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to resolution number Seeing none, bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council?
Requesting unanimous consent.
Councilmember Glenn Dinning?
Yeah, I have a question.
Vice Mayor.
Is there a limit or a boundary to where this insurance program would apply? In other words, is it just by water courses, is it just on the waterfront, or would it be, say, in the middle of Budland subdivision as the other extreme?
I'll turn this over. I think this is in relation to our bluff erosion project, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Ralston. Paul?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glenn Dinning. So the NFIP would apply over the entire boundary of the city. However, the only place where any regulations would apply within the city are either floodplain, mapped floodplain, or mapped floodway, which is always associated with some type of waterway. So while it does cover the entire city boundary, the majority of the city would be unaffected.
Vice Mayor Glenn Dinning.
Yeah, so the definitions of insurance requirement are already established in that it is floodplain, it is a place where a flood could happen, and it really doesn't change our relationship with the federal government, other than we are now going to subscribe to it as a requirement for our bluff erosion. Is that correct?
Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glenn Dinning. Yeah, so by joining the NFIP, what it does is if there is development in the city that's in a floodplain or the floodway, the city would regulate that development in a manner that we do not currently. So in the floodplain, for example, if you were to build a permanent structure within the floodplain, participation in NFIP requires that the base, the elevation of the bottom floor of that structure be at or above what's called a base flood elevation. So it needs to elevate things above that base flood elevation. Other types of structures that aren't permanent, that are built in the floodplain, such as a boardwalk, or a fence, or something like that, that would actually be a floodplain permit that would be required for that, much simpler process than if you build a permanent structure in the floodplain. So there are requirements associated with the NFIP that we would have to meet, that we do not currently have to meet. I will tell you that the number of properties within the city of Kenai that are in the floodplain is very small. I'd say less than 10 privately owned parcels in the entire city that would be impacted by this. So I don't think it's fair to say that there wouldn't be any changes with participation in this program. There would be, but I do think the impacts would be relatively minor.
Vice Mayor Glenn Dinning.
Thank you. Did I understand correctly, then, the city would administer this program under the supervision of the insurance?
Ms. Ralston.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glenn Dinning, yes, that's the case. So this resolution is the first step of a three-step process for participation in the NFIP, the resolution being the first one. Assuming the resolution passes, the administration then would fill out an application, and Mr. Bloom would start working on an ordinance, floodplain ordinance, that would outline the requirements for how we would regulate activities within the floodplain or the floodway of the city. So that ordinance would come to council sometime in the next couple of months, assuming we go down this path. And to answer your question, yes, the city would then, we would be responsible for administering that code once it was adopted by the council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Petty.
Yes, Mayor Gabriel, I'd like to ask Mr. Ralston a question, please, about this is required in order for us to move forward with the bluff erosion project. Is that my correct understanding, sir?
Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Petty, yes, that is the case.
And then also, once this is implemented, do we have the opportunity to back out of it at a later date?
Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Petty, there does not appear to be any requirement. The city maintains participation in NFIP after construction.
And then one more follow-up.
Follow-up.
Also, sir, do we have an estimate of what the cost? I do see it's federally subsidized insurance, flood insurance. Do we have a ballpark estimate of what that would cost annually for the city, or does that figure come in after our